All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. And I'd like to call the March 5th, 2019 meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would.
Mayor Silva.
Here.
Mayor Proton Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilmember Whitaker.
Present.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Councilmember Floria is absent.
Thank you. And for our invocation, I'd like to ask Chief Dunn, if he will lead us in that, please?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please guide us through this evening's meeting. Give us the wisdom and strength and respect for one another that is required to conduct ourselves civically. We ask that you give our elected leaders the wisdom to make good decisions here tonight. And those of us who are joining us, please bless them as we endeavor to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. In your name, amen.
Thank you. And now, since I didn't ask anyone, I'd like everyone to stand up and join me in the pledge, please. Ready, yet? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And our city attorney, do we have any closed session items to report out?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. The case of Cody Carter versus the City of Fullerton, the city council has unanimously agreed to settle that case with the amount of $80,000.
All right, thank you. And at this time, do any council members have any ex parte communications that they wish to report out?
(mimicking music) Yeah.
All right, seeing none. We'll go to our presentations. And I know they're listed as Presentation One as the outgoing board and the proclamation second, but we're going to reverse that. We'll have the proclamation first. So, Mr. Dennis Quinlan, if you would mind.
I'm here.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, members of the council. Dennis Quinlan, Deputy Director of Public Works, here this evening to receive our proclamation for Arbor Day. And that's the first standard that we receive in conjunction with three others, the Dedicated Tree Board, Dedicated Department to Tree Maintenance, and spending over $2 per capita per citizen for our tree services. So, would you like me to invite everybody right now, or?
Yes.
Okay. Our Arbor Day presentation will be this March 16th, thank you, at Richmond Park, and you're all invited to come. We typically plant about 20 trees, so you're all invited to come out and help us plant. We bring shovels all the gear to get it done, but if you have a shovel, that would be appreciated to bring that, too. Rakes. Hopefully, it won't rain. I think we've had about 17 inches of rain so far this year, which is awesome. But it'll make the digging a lot easier for you, so that's a plus. But please come out and join us. It's a good event, and we can talk about trees. If you have questions about the community forest management plan, how we maintain the trees in the city, our species diversity, anything that you want to talk about, that's a great opportunity to come and meet my staff, and we can answer all your questions. So, please come out.
All right, thank you. So, Arbor Day. So, whereas proclamation from the city and...
(inaudible). We also have a certificate from Assemblywoman Sharon Crook-Silva's office. So, I'll read a part of her proclamation as, "Whereas in 1872, the state of Nebraska set aside a special day for the planting of trees, and it is estimated more than 1 million trees were planted on the first Arbor Day. And whereas Fullerton is celebrating its 38th year designation as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue expanding and protecting its urban forests of over 34,000 street trees. Whereas the city of Fullerton will celebrate this Arbor Day by planting magnolia, jacaranda, and pink tabel bouillot trees at Richmond Park," as Dennis mentioned. "Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jesus Silva, Mayor of City of Fullerton, on behalf of the entire Fullerton City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 16, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Fullerton, and urge all Fullerton citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands."
Mr. Quinlan, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and hopefully we'll see you all then. (applause). All right, here we go, one. Oh, yeah, there we go. All right, one, two, and three. There we go. Oops, I'm sorry.
Can I get one more? Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good work. Thanks, sir. All right.
So, now we'll go to our second part. And at this point, we're going to acknowledge our commissioners and committee members who have ended their term or have decided to step down. And there's a... How many of you do we have in attendance here? I know five of you had RSVP. All right, perfect, then. So, we'll start with... We'll start here with John Bustman. He is served on the Community Development Citizens Committee. Congratulations. And here you go.
One, two, and three. And then stick around back here. We're going to...
Nick Dunleavy, the Planning Commission. All right. And Peter Gambino. And he's on the Planning Commission and the Citizens Infrastructure Review Committee and Transportation and Circulation Committee. Oh, my goodness. When do you have time for all of this?
We go one, two, and three. I guess it doesn't mean in life right now.
Oh, my pleasure. And Jane Rans, who is on... was on the Bicycle Users Subcommittee and Citizens Infrastructure Review Committee. Uh-oh. You're going the wrong way. There you go. We'll get one up from the city.
Hey, one more for me. One, two, and three.
And the last one, Michael Ritchie, who was on the Community Development Citizens Committee. All right, very good. Thank you for the mic.
One, two, and three.
And then, don't go away. We also have a certificate from the Assemblywoman Sharon Crook-Silva's office, and same thing, recognizing your efforts and your commitment. And so, we'll pass these out, but as a group photo, I would like to have our council join us down here for a group photo with all of them, but so where's Jane? There you go. John? Michael?
We're voting.
And why don't we come up here and we'll get one big happy picture.
We'll get our council just in.
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just going to... Right there. We're going to squeeze in right here.
We go on three. One, two, and three.
Thank you.
And Stephen, I think I can get a little girl and she's a good guy.
There you go.
Yeah. That's right.
Three, two.
Yeah. I get to see it every day.
Yeah. And thank you. And I'll just quickly mention the other members who are not here, but who we appreciate very much for the service and time they put into. Darren Jones. And if I call your name and you're here, come on up. Darren Jones, Darren Rector, Jamie Garcia, Liz Savage, Marty Burbank, Charles Chung, Elizabeth Hansbrough, Nora Matty, Ryan Kanter, Karen McNabb, Susan Kabinsky, excuse me, Josette Trinidad-Caseneda, Wayne Carvalho, Rooney Takur, Diana Honeywell, Matthew Adwang, Ken Bain, Patrick McNally, Ryan Alcantara, Arnold Dino. Oh, come on over, Jose. And why don't you guys stand right here? Let me finish and kiss anyone's up, and we'll... Ted Sanford, Wes Smith, Samuel Wheeler, Pamela Takur, Alina Ray, Mark Shapiro, Eric Walters, Monique Rabeldo, Gretchen Cox. Is she here? She's always here, not today, huh? And Janelle Bader. All right. And then you guys, we do have them for you, and I apologize if you have your... Steve, you got them?
I'm working on a rack.
All right. Well, let's... Thank you, guys. (applause).
Because of the special, you get to get a smaller picture and...
And thank you for your service.
All right, sorry about that.
All right, one more picture. Why don't we get you guys in the middle there and feel a little bit of society and make it a little more uniform.
All right, here we go. On three. One, two, and three.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
(inaudible).
All right. And try to stop it there. Thank you so much.
All right. One, two, and three.
You guys are so lucky.
All right.
I'm looking as soon as I want to.
No, it never is.
I know.
All right. This brings us now to public comments. So, Ms. City Clerk, how many slips do we have right now?
About 15.
All right. So, this is your time to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda and that are within our purview. So, if you can come up and form a line, and we'll get you up here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and council. My name is Jane Rans. I'm part of the group that was standing out front, celebrating our hills and rallying in support of preserving all 510 acres of Coyote Hills. We understand the challenges that we can pursue, and the courts are done, but that doesn't mean that the city can't still continue moving forward towards purchasing as much as possible. We've had a lot of progress over the last year, raising $30 million with the partnership, city, elected officials, support of Friends of Coyote Hills, and the community. And I'd like to ask the council to continue pursuing that great effort because it's been such a success. And if we could preserve all 510 acres, then we would have a much-needed open space in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. And I first want to start out by saying I'm sorry if I don't give eye contact. I get so nervous that I read everything. And it's not that I don't mean what I say. It's coming from the bottom of my heart, especially this message and these comments. We are on the brink of something great and beautiful that everyone can be a part of and something where everyone wins. All of us working together can save all of Coyote Hills. We are committed to raising the funds needed to purchase all of the land. We wish to work with you, the council, and Chevron to save it all. The winners will be everyone. The majority of Fullerton and others beyond Fullerton who desire that all West Coyote Hills be saved. Chevron, who will be paid without the time, effort, and expense of development. All wildlife that live in and/or need the hills, including rare endangered species and migratory birds. Habitats that include rare plants. The environment with rainwater that is absorbed into the ground, not runoff taking pollutants with it to the ocean. Cooling rather than heating the earth, among so many other reasons. Residents of Fullerton and all surrounding areas being given the respite that only nature can provide now and much more, now and forever. Together, we can raise the money to purchase all of West Coyote Hills. Together, we can do this thing where everyone wins. All of us, the city council, residents of Fullerton and others, and Chevron can work together to create this beautiful thing where we all win by saving it all. Please be a part of this and give us all the chance to accomplish this beautiful thing that will last forever. The great majority of residents and voters in Fullerton will support you in this and will remember the great thing that you helped us do. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of the city council. My name is Tony Pakage, and I have been an interested resident for 15 years. Last city council meeting was pathetic. You aired your dirty laundry in front of your residents, and you handled it badly. Mayor Silva tried to control but failed. In the end, I was not proud of any of you. Your behavior reminds me of the bitterness each other exhibited around the Kelly Thomas deaths. The citizens had to recall several members to bring civility and residents concerned back to this council. Mrs. Zara, fair the worst. Your reason to being on the OCWD was pathetic. It showed you were either very naive or ignorant of Fullerton water system. Regardless of where the plume is, all districts share the water, same water, and the city maintains strict mandated water quality control. I believe 70% of the audience has a better understanding of our water system than you do, and you want to represent us. Fine, I understand that. Before you attend one meeting at the OCDWD, I suggest you meet with the city water team and learn how our system functions. That includes visiting pumping stations in your district. Visit and tour our water sewer treatment facility that produces 120,000 gallons of water every day. Visit the MWD Deemer Plant, which is the primary supplier of 25% of our water. Take the MWD tours up north and to the Colorado River. Find out how we get our water. Last, last, listen, listen, listen. In your ignorance, you tend to be... You ask foolish questions. There's an old saying that I've always remembered, is that you can be quiet and thought a fool or open your mouth and let everybody know it's true. Now, so, I just ask you to do...
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and Council. My name is Jane Rans. I'm part of the group that was standing out front, celebrating our hills, and rallying in support of preserving all 510 acres of Coyote Hills. We understand the challenges that we can pursue, and the courts are done, but that doesn't mean that the city can't still continue moving forward towards purchasing as much as possible. We've had a lot of progress over the last year, raising $30 million with the partnership, city, elected officials, support of Friends of Coyote Hills, and the community. And I'd like to ask the council to continue pursuing that great effort, because it's been such a success, and if we could preserve all 510 acres, then we would have a much-needed open space in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I first want to start out by saying I'm sorry if I don't give eye contact, I get so nervous that I read everything, and it's not that I don't mean what I say, it's coming from the bottom of my heart, especially this message and these comments. We are on the brink of something great and beautiful that everyone can be a part of, and something where everyone wins. All of us working together can save all of Coyote Hills. We are committed to raising the funds needed to purchase all of the land. We wish to work with you, the council, and Chevron to save it all. The winners will be everyone. The majority of Fullerton and others beyond Fullerton who desire that all West Coyote Hills be saved. Chevron, who will be paid without the time, effort, and expense of development. All wildlife that live in and/or need the hills, including rare endangered species and migratory birds. Habitats that include rare plants. The environment with rainwater that is absorbed into the ground, not runoff taking pollutants with it to the ocean. Cooling rather than heating the earth, among so many other reasons. Residents of Fullerton and all surrounding areas being given the respite that only nature can provide, now, and much more, now and forever. Together, we can raise the money to purchase all of West Coyote Hills. Together, we can do this thing where everyone wins. All of us, the city council, residents of Fullerton and others, and Chevron can work together to create this beautiful thing where we all win by saving it all. Please be a part of this and give us all the chance to accomplish this beautiful thing that will last forever. The great majority of residents and voters in Fullerton will support you in this, and will remember the great thing that you helped us do. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of the city council. My name is Tony Pakage, and I have been an interested resident for 15 years. Last city council meeting was pathetic. You aired your dirty laundry in front of your residents, and you handled it badly. Mayor Silva tried to control but failed. In the end, I was not proud of any of you. Your behavior reminds me of the bitterness each other exhibited around the Kelly Thomas deaths. The citizens had to recall several members to bring civility and residents concerned back to this council. Mrs. Zara, fair the worst. Your reason to being on the OCWD was pathetic. It showed you were either very naive or ignorant of Fullerton water system. Regardless of where the plume is, all districts share the water, same water, and the city maintains strict mandated water quality control. I believe 70% of the audience has a better understanding of our water system than you do, and you want to represent us. Fine, I understand that. Before you attend one meeting at the OCDWD, I suggest you meet with the city water team and learn how our system functions. That includes visiting pumping stations in your district. Visit and tour our water sewer treatment facility that produces 120,000 gallons of water every day. Visit the MWD Deemer Plant, which is the primary supplier of 25% of our water. Take the MWD tours up north and to the Colorado River. Find out how we get our water. Last, last, listen, listen, listen. In your ignorance, you tend to be, you ask foolish questions. There's an old saying that I've always remembered, is that you can be quiet and thought a fool, or open your mouth and let everybody know it's true. Now, so, I just ask you to do your homework before you attend the meetings. Mr. Whittier, while I feel sad for what, how you were picked on by the council, you created this scenario by changing the district vote from two to three. You never know who was going to be in District Two. So, you're, you should live up to your things. I know, who knows? She wasn't gonna, she wasn't gonna run, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Council, my name is Nancy Estes. I've lived in Fullerton for close to 50 years, it's hard to believe that now. Came here in 1970. And I, along with at least 60% of the people in Fullerton, support keeping Coyote Hills 100% a wildlife preserve for this community to enjoy, as well as the surrounding communities, La Habra, Whittier. I just really want you to consider what we are trying to do, and we can work together on this effort to raise the money, to buy it from Chevron, and keep it as, you know, the last open parcel of land in North Orange County. It's desperately needed. We don't need another 760 homes, and all the traffic and everything that implies. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, my name is Harry Longenbacher, and I live in Fullerton. And I'm here to follow up on a comment I made about a month ago here, when I reported my experience at the Armory Homeless Shelter. I told you that there was a woman there who's 87 years old and wheelchair-bound, who's been using the Armory for over a year. And I appreciate that the city manager reacted and said he would call Mercy House. I couldn't respond at that time, but you might know what I was thinking. I went, I went, the next day, she went down across the freeway into Anaheim and met some friends of mine who are helping homeless people, and they noticed her being 87 years old in a wheelchair. They got her phone number, they got her name, her name is Phyllis, her daughter's name is Phyllis, who cares for her all the time. And they called the city of Anaheim, and city of Anaheim didn't do anything for her. That night, she was back in the shelter, sleeping on the concrete floor. The next three or four days, the Armory was closed, and of course, now, there is no alternative when the Armory is closed for dark nights, so who knows where she spent the next three or four nights. I've seen her every week since then. I saw her last Wednesday, I saw her last Friday night, I've talked to the staff about it, they say they know about her, they have her information, but they can't do anything for her, and it's not her fault. I, it's not, it's not the staff's fault. I admire the staff, they're compassionate people, but they're, the whole system is underfunded, undertrained, understaffed. I learned last night that the per capita expenditure in Orange County for homeless people in emergency shelters is much less, and I don't have the numbers, but I was told much, much less than in Los Angeles County and virtually all of the rest of California. And it's, it's, that's what I always thought when I was at the Armory. It is a bare-bones shelter. When the people come in, they get a mat, a blanket, a hot meal, and a towel to take a shower, and then they have to get up at 5:15 and leave at 5:15 in the morning, in the coldest part of the day, get on a bus, and put back on the street. So, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna keep complaining about this until it's improved. It has not improved for 30 years, it's only gotten worse. The Armory is worse than it ever has been before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, my name is Jensen Hallstrom. I would just like to state my support for preserving all 510 acres of West Coyote Hills, and I'd like to remind everyone here tonight that before, a lot of development, you know, within the past 50 years, the open space in West Coyote Hills was almost double the size that it is currently today, around 1,000 acres, so cutting it in half again with the newly proposed 760 homes is just quite unfortunate, as of course, East Coyote Hills has already been almost completely developed, and so saving all of Coyote Hills would be an extreme, you know, opportunity to, you know, save, you know, the condition of our neighborhoods to make them more healthy and livable. That is all for that, and also, I'd like to remind everyone of this year's Arbor Day tree planting over at Richmond Park on March 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, buenas noches, good evening.
Okay, buenas noches, Mr. Silva, miembros del Consilio. Yo vengo a apoyar que cambien el nombre de Mid Block. Mi nombre es Veronica Moran.
Me espero un momento. Tiene alguien que la traduza, o necesitamos alguien?
Vamos a tener alguien que traduzca de la ciudad.
Okay. Hugo, you offer, Mr. Curio? All right. Ahora, ahora, cuando, espacio y en cortos pedazos, pues para qué?
Sí, gracias. Buenas noches, miembros del Consilio, mayors.
Good evening, members of the council.
Mi nombre es Veronica Moran, y soy residente de Fullerton por once años.
She's been a resident of Fullerton for 11 years.
La razón que estoy aquí es porque vengo a apoyar el cambio de Mid Block.
I am here to support the change of the name of the Mid Block Street.
A Tommy De La Rosa.
To Tommy De La Rosa.
La razón es porque como líder de la comunidad...
The reason is that, as he was a leader of the community...
Y estar involucrada por muchos años en la, en, en los cambios que ha habido en Valencia y Richmond.
And as she's been involved in the changes that have taken place at, in the Valencia, Richmond area throughout the years.
Yo estuve en las juntas de la policía con la comunidad en la escuela de Richmond.
I was present at the meetings and the community meetings that took place between the PD and the, and that local community.
Cuando se iba a abrir la calle.
When they were gonna open the street.
Y sería bueno reconocer a nuestros héroes como parte de la comunidad, y para que nuestros niños vean diferentes cosas, no nada más, lo que, su ambiente, que está alrededor.
And so that they could recognize the leaders of that community, and also what's within that environment around their...
¿Qué es repetir el último?
Su, no solamente el ambiente que ellos ven, violencia, pandillas.
So, so that the youth can see what good has taken place within that community, not only what's their, perhaps on a daily basis, illicit types of activities.
Y por esa razón les pido, por favor, que tomen en consideración, que podamos tener el nombre de Tommy De La Rosa, ya que esto da otra visión para nuestros niños.
So if you could please consider that Tommy De La Rosa's name could be considered as the Mid Block.
Y agradecer todo lo que hace la policía.
And to also appreciate everything that the PD has done.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you, Mr. Curio.
Good evening, Mr. Silva, good evening, members of... My name is Alma Chavez, and I live in Fullerton for 19 years, and I come in to support the Main Black Street, changed the name for Tommy De La Rosa, and I think that's good, thing for the kids, see the, they give, support the people who live and make the change for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Eglie Nuncy, and we're gonna come all collectively, and we're gonna, you see, honor all of us together, otherwise it's gonna take too long, and I know everybody gonna appreciate, go home early. Okay? We are here, we are from District Number Five, Number Four, and from the city of Fullerton, which is more important. And we come here to please ask you to change the name from Mid Block Street to Tommy De La Rosa, which was one of our officers here in Fullerton, that died enforcing the, you see, the war against the drugs. We wanna show gangs and general crime that we, as a neighbor, we're not gonna stand for that damage to our children, that we're gonna have a great relationship with our police department, and we are pro justice, pro police department, and most of all, we're gonna help and defend the life of our children, and of the future generation. And this is a way to, everybody wanna show respect and support to our police department, the people, they risk their life every day, and we can be in home with our families, and be, feel safe. And this is something that we ask you, right now, it's not gonna be like a big hassle, because we know that street is pro development, you see, neighbors don't have to change their address, and maybe it's gonna be something easy, and it's gonna give us, as a resident, the opportunity, to all of us, to show that we have that relationship with justice, we believe in a better future for our community, and we're asking you that as a favor to us, your neighbors, to consider that, and we thank you for your time and your consideration, and I know this is something that is can be possible sooner, before they start developing more, and it means so much to us. You see, as a community, we see his name when we drive in the five freeway, now we wanna see it in our street, to honor him, and I thank you so much for your time, and the residents, we thank you, thank you, and our police department, thank you for your great job. We stand by you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, a wonderful evening.
Muchas gracias por venir esta noche.
Gracias.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Council, my name is Maureen Milton, I'm a 50-year resident, 50 years and 11 months resident of the city of Fullerton, and I'm coming, thank you, and I'm coming to inquire of a thing that will be on the council members next month, or in two weeks, and that is the flying of the pride flag. Great idea, but what I'm asking, has a protocol been set by the city for the flying of any type of organizational flag? Because if a prototype, or not prototype, but protocol and guidelines are not set, this might cause a problem. You want people of positive organizations to be proud of, to represent, to honor, but someone that doesn't have a positive attitude, i.e., somebody, a pirate, might wanna come up and ask to have the skull and crossbones flown. That's, so a protocol with guidelines should be set, and I think it would be a wonderful idea to have a, as more organizations ask, to have a pamphlet or flyers called Fullerton's Fund with Flags, so all the residents and children in the city would know why these flags are flying. I hope that you do something like this, I think it would be a great idea, and I think our flagpole would be beautiful, colorful, and educational, and very interesting when people drive by. But protocol has to be done, because I would hate to have the city be sued when somebody would come up and say, "You flew their flag, why not fly ours?" And that is one thing that I hope that you consider. I have pamphlets, or not pamphlets, but things about the flag, there are sets of protocols about the flag, and also the flagpole that should be followed. I know the one protocol is, if a flagpole is cut down during the, during wartime, that's treason. And that happened at my high school in 1960, when our flagpole was, was cut down, and we went to school the next morning, and there it was laying across the front yard of the school. So, do think about it, read this if you can, I know you have a lot to do, and I hope you make a positive decision.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Hi. My name is Alexa, and I'm a resident of Fullerton and a student at Sunny Hills High School. Today, I told a lot of people about what was happening today, and it didn't really seem like many people cared, and I'm not really sure if anyone else from Sunny is here, but I think a lot of people, including my peers, don't realize how important it is to preserve the natural stuff that we have here. Like, I'm certain you've noticed in climate change, how things are just going downhill, and paving things and building over Coyote Hills is not going to help, it's not going to make an improvement. And I talked to one of my teachers about this, and he said, because Chevron is going to sell it to a developer, correct? So, he said, "Well, did the wildlife and did the plants pay for the land?" And I said, "No, but it was theirs first. It's not ours to begin with, and I just believe that it's wrong to take it down." And also, for future generations, generations to come, they're going to want to have a place to go play in the park and roll down hills and blow bubbles? I still do that. So, I don't know, I just really hope that you guys will consider what I'm saying and what everybody else here is saying, because it's really important. And sometimes, you can't get things back, like when trees are cut down and forests are dying, and parks are being built over, sometimes, you can't get that back, and please consider again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, I'm a 42-year resident of Fullerton, my name's Mary Tanamachi, and obviously, I'm for saving Coyote Hills. I attended one of the appeal hearings, in referencing the 61% of citizens developing Coyote Hills, it was stated that the city council took that to mean that the citizens wanted a better deal. I don't understand how 61% of the citizens voting against developing the land could be interpreted as meaning that we wanted a better deal. We just want the land left as it is, undeveloped, so that future generations can enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Samantha. Last city council, I requested your help and offered you mine. My poem may have touched your hearts, but not one of you reached out for me for fresh ideas, which I wasn't expecting anyways. But what I did expect was your help to solve at least my homeless situation. Mayor, you referred me to your city manager, city manager, you referred me to your housing and neighbor services manager, who referred me to CityNet, who referred me to Streetlight Church, along with CityNet Housing Navigator. Streetlight Church is too strict for my liking, and the Housing Navigator has not gotten in contact with me. Pathways of Hope reached out with one email and never followed up after I sent multiple emails back. This is why homeless can't trust its own city and local nonprofit organizations. You bounce us around because you can't help, so I demand that you start coming up with solutions for affordable housing. The housing already exists. Negotiate with the owners about making it affordable and not just profitable. There are 61... There are sixty-one private rooms, two homes, and five hundred and seventeen roommates needed on Roomster.com. There are two hundred and fifty-two homes and a hundred and thirty-two rentals on Trulia.com. Eight hundred and thirty-eight apartments on Apartments.com. Two hundred and fifty-three homes and a hundred and fourteen rentals on Zillow.com. All of these numbers are from the city of Fullerton only. That means the average placement of beds is five hundred and forty-two. We need the city to get on these owners who discriminate and are prejudiced against homeless individuals and families. We need the owners to stop being money hungry. I'm requesting housing be obtainable and affordable for all. I want this request to go to all the cities, all the counties, all the states, all the landlords, all the homeowners, all the non-homeowners. Let us all stand together and turn this American nightmare back into an American dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mayor Silva. I'm Karen Lang McNabb. I've been a member of Coyote Hills for nearly twenty years, and I just wanna say a couple of words about it. You know, in the beginning, we were told, "Don't bother, it's a done deal, so just leave it be. It's gonna be developed." But that didn't have to be. And over time, we've managed to work together with legislators and private individuals and come up with thirty million dollars, which has gone a long way, and indeed, at least one and maybe three of the parcels in there are going to be saved. So I don't think that would have happened without Friends of Coyote Hills. It's important. This is the last natural open space in Northwest Orange County, and it's not gonna be there if we develop it. It's not gonna be there for the next generation, it's not gonna be there for anyone to enjoy the nature, and if we build on part of it, the nature's not gonna last very long, because it doesn't have the space enough to procreate and find partners to find partners, that type of thing. So, I think if we have the vision all together to work together on this, it's possible to still save all five hundred and ten acres. And I'd like to ask you respectfully to work with us and see that we can make that happen, because I think we can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jose Trinidad Casaneda. I just wanna touch on two topics that may seem disparate but are actually very interconnected, and that's climate change and housing. I really appreciate all the people that have come up and spoken about Coyote Hills and affordable housing in the city, but we need to think long-term, in terms of connecting our housing environment and transit together. I really am taking a stretch, but after reviewing the Orange County Transportation Authority's corridor plans across Beach Boulevard, Harbor Boulevard, and State College, I really believe it's possible that within the next ten years, we can find funding for a light rail transit system on Beach Boulevard and Harbor Boulevard, connecting our streetcar in Santa Ana all the way to Fullerton. And with this, we can really focus on increasing the amount of housing along transit corridors. This is a concept called Transit Oriented Development, and it's being proposed as a state law, as SB 50 in the state legislature now. And so, I want you to think where we put our housing. Should we put it in the last remaining open space and natural reserves like Coyote Hills, when in reality, we should be thinking about how to connect housing with job centers and faster, more frequent, and reliable transit systems, like light rail, streetcars, and bus rapid transit? So, I know it sounds like a stretch, but listen to the residents who are speaking about Coyote Hills. That doesn't need to be the place or the best use of our land for seven hundred and sixty multimillion-dollar homes that require much more electricity and water usage, and increase the traffic in that area when we can reduce traffic by finding solutions for transit along high-frequency corridors like Harbor and Beach and State College. So, it sounds like a big plan, because we need to think big. We're in an era of climate change. This weather that we're facing, the thunderstorm that's coming tonight and tomorrow, is our new normal. There's an atmospheric river from the heating of the Equatorial Pacific that's causing massive storms, unlike any we've ever seen, with greater unpredictability, that are zooming along the Pacific into the California coast. So when you think about these concepts, they're very, very scientifically based. We're on a physics-based timeline to address climate change, reduce our carbon emissions, increase affordable housing, and provide better transit that's not just single riders, single passengers, along our very corroded streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, members of the council. My name is Deborah Pember. During the Measure W era, the Friends misled us all to believe that if they prevailed, we would get a park. Other than acquiring the land, I have not seen a plan from them that actually outlined how the open space would be preserved or how a park would be provided, which has always been one of my greatest concerns. With the recent State Supreme Court ruling, I am thrilled to know that over two hundred acres of open space will indeed be preserved, including the Robert E. Ward Preserve. That is one thing that I have not heard anybody say tonight, as far as what the preservation, the land that will be preserved as true open space that we really will get to enjoy. I think it's important to note that to preserve open space, it takes more than just acquiring it. I am now confident that the critical habitat for the California gnat catcher will be restored and preserved. The cleanup of the invasive plant material that is choking out the gnat catcher's environment will increase their habitat. I now know that the current fire hazard along the boundary adjacent to the homes will be addressed. My concern from the beginning was if the Friends had been successful, that there was no plan of funding to manage that open space and maintain the flora and fauna requirements needed to thrive once it was acquired. We now have a real opportunity to enjoy the trails and the vistas, to provide the education opportunities for our schools and universities on the importance of nature and preservation. This is truly a win-win for the city and its residents, and at no cost to the city. Pretty amazing. This is private property, and Fullerton is getting a huge gift. It's time to move on. So I wanna thank you for your dedication, this council and all the previous councils, and continuing efforts to do the right thing for all of Fullerton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Silva, Councilmember Whitaker, Fitzgerald, and Zarrah. I am Chris Huser, a very longtime member, resident of the city of Fullerton. I have two words: finally, and gratitude. Finally, we can begin to open West Coyote Hills to make it accessible for the public to enjoy and participate. Finally, we can begin the development of eight miles of new trails and the restoration of two miles of existing trails, which will tie in with our already fine trail system. Finally, we can begin to restore and improve the five key vistasites, which offer magnificent views from the property's highest points. Finally, we can complete the design and development of the Interpretive Nature Center within the Robert E. Ward Nature Preserve. And gratitude. Gratitude to Bob Ward, for whom the Robert E. Ward Preserve is named. He was a visionary. He was tenacious. He was dedicated. He was passionate. He was relentless in his commitment to West Coyote Hills. He was involved in every single project within the West Coyote Hills, to ensure that the integrity of the master plan was honored, that the maximum amount of open space feasible within any project was preserved. Gratitude for all the time and effort he spent to get us to where we are today, for laying the foundation which has resulted in a master plan for West Coyote Hills that offers extraordinary benefits to the city. And finally, we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly McClanahan. I just wanna say it was so wonderful to hear the name of Tomas de la Rosa again, I remember. Good evening. I want to speak in favor of moving ahead with the plan for West Coyote Hills, and let me tell you why. Thirteen thousand seventeen kindergarteners through eighth-grade students are waiting. Our lead science teachers in the elementary school district are waiting to have access to the West Coyote Hills Preserve, to enhance the California science curriculum. Thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-five ninth through twelfth grade students in our eight high schools are waiting to learn about stewardship of this open space preserve and to live their lives into adulthood as defenders of wilderness. One hundred and sixteen acres of invasive plants are waiting to be removed, which in turn reduces the fire hazard they pose in our extended dry seasons. The public is waiting for access to the ridgelines, which are precluded from development, including viewing sites for the public. We cannot wait for the Interpretive Center, since it offers a portal to the flora and fauna and sounds and sights of this nearly three hundred acre preserve. We cannot wait longer for the necessary interpretive signage and education of trained staff, and I might add volunteers. These elements do indeed protect the Open Space Preserve. This moment, instead of delaying the adopted West Coyote Hills Interpretive Master Plan, which we do have, should be a time for those of us in open Coyote Hills and the Friends of Coyote Hills together, to envision a state-of-the-art interpretive center, potentially off the grid, similar to the Debs Regional Park. Don Means, now retired from Chevron, supported this concept. To visit the Nick's Nature Center off of Laguna Canyon Road to understand the value of an interpretive center. To be involved with the planned development of seven hundred and sixty homes, insisting on good design, sustainable building, and sustainable landscaping that complements and enhances the adjacent nature preserve. This is the time to utilize two generous endowments that will ensure the maintenance, stewardship, and the preservation of the Open Space Preserve, plus the staffing to make this possible in perpetuity. This is not the time to delay, but the time to come together. In the end, we will conserve only what we love, we love only what we understand, we will understand only what we are taught. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva, Mayor Pro Tem Fitzgerald, Councilmember Whitaker, Councilmember Zarrah, and City Manager Ken Domer. I'm Bob Hayden. I have the honor, the distinct honor, of working with a group of people that are just amazing. And as I've said before, there's no single issue in the city of Fullerton that all ten of us would agree on, except this. And while I could dwell on the misleading lie of the Friends, that a no vote on Measure W would save all of Coyote Hills as a park, or their understatement that the Supreme Court just had too many cases to consider the case, or the case where there's money, and now Angela Lindstrom said to the Register, saying, "It seems unlikely the city will be able to buy the entire property." The responsibility in a democracy requires accountability, and the city and Pacific Coast Homes, with the Appeal Court ruling, was given an opportunity to hold those accountable for their actions by reclaiming your cost of appeal. And I certainly hope the city and Chevron will do such. But more importantly, let's focus on opening Coyote Hills. As many of you know, six and a half years ago, I was diagnosed with a treatable but non-curable cancer. Happened to be right around the time Measure W. I never knew for certain that I would be here on a day that is so magnanimous to see this project move forward. And it is a high honor to be here, and it's about time we open Coyote Hills. It's about time we move forward and not backwards, that we put our differences aside and find a way to work together so the community can finally benefit from the Robert E. Ward Nature Preserve and honor Robert E. Ward for his passion and his desire for open space, as well as many others who have been a part of this community who no longer walk this earth. It is time for us to open Coyote Hills, so children from every district in this city, whether it be the fifth or the fourth, which are the furthest removed from it, have an opportunity through schools and after-school programs through parks and recreation to experience and learn about the natural fauna and flora, and to enjoy that and to go on hikes and maybe even picnics in the vista parks, and be able to experience nature in a learning environment and one that's fun and doesn't require time of their parents. It is time now for us to move forward and open Coyote Hills. Thank you for your continuing efforts, and I look forward to working with you to see that happen.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council. My name, Curtis Gamble, activist, on behalf of the homeless and the residents. I'm just gonna read off my list. It's pretty consistent with what I've been saying all the time, but I'm just gonna go by the numbers on the list. I have six things on my list. Number one, rest in peace Lucas. Lucas is a homeless man that was behind St. Mary's Church. He passed away a couple nights ago. Number two, the flyers that I just passed you guys with the meals on it, and new shelters that we just opened, and I'm also recommending that that flyer be put on the city's website and also in the Fullerton library, because it helps out the homeless greatly, as well as the community. Number three, the police chief. I just want to share with you guys that the city municipal codes for emergency shelters, I have them here, it's different cities. It's about thirteen different cities that are in our spa, that has emergency shelter codes. I would like, I would like the shelters to operate based upon the city codes, and I would like for the chief to make sure that this happens in Fullerton and other cities to make sure that it happens. For example, the city codes say that the shelters should be on a first-served, first-come basis. It says also that they should be a half a mile away from a bus stop, which clearly means that they can ride the bus, the homeless. Many of the homeless are complaining that they want to be independent. Okay, that's, let me move on to number four. Continuum of Care Board. I'm a member of the Continuum of Care Board, which receives twenty-four million dollars a year on behalf of the homeless. We have millions to spend to help out the homeless and the community around. We have three open seats available, so if you'd like to be a member and be on the board with me and help me do this, please come do. Number five, a hundred and two-bed emergency shelter will open at La Mesa, at La Mesa Street, right next to the Kramer Place tomorrow morning. OCTA bus drivers and the activists, advocates, should be the operators of the shelters. They've worked very hard with homeless, they're very familiar with them, they don't beat them up, they don't kill them, they don't disrespect them in any ways. So I'd like to see these things get done, and especially with the chief, and all chiefs in every city. Make sure that we enforce these city codes, first-come, first-served basis. We already have the laws, there's no new laws. We already have the laws, there's no new laws we need to make on behalf of the emergency shelters. We just need to enforce what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Rob Hallstrom, longtime Fullerton resident. Regarding those precious Coyote Hills, I can't understand why no one is presenting a better alternative than what's been proposed and endlessly debated. The lack of foresight and improper mismanaged development of the hills since the seventies and eighties will never be corrected or undone, only what's to come. The long and short of it is, there is a place for everything, including the proposed housing, just not in the hills of a rural, unspoiled and natural environment. It would be effectively just another extension of the crowded outer layering communities which took the hillsides, took from the hillsides in the last big development surge. Those communities of tract houses and condos are no different than those down the hill. High-density development, in my opinion, is better served within civic and more densely populated areas. Aside from the designated allotment of untouched space, even given the additional amount of proposed green spaces, which amount to nothing more than slivers between the packed developments, littering these last remaining countrysides with rows of densely crowded homes, condos, sidewalks, curbs, streetlights, and the related noise pollution simply just doesn't belong here. Chevron and City Council don't seem to see or respect an outlying boundary or limit between non-rural and a remote countryside hilltop. There is a significant difference, that is until the line, the line is so blurred that everything blends together. Same with the surrounding cities such as La Habra and its city council. They've allowed the same irresponsible encroachments over the decades on the northern side of the hills, nearly all the way to the very tip-top. Hundreds of houses, townhomes, condos, and apartments packed within tiny parcels, no different in size and close proximity than the parcels in any given direction for miles and miles, just look at a Google's Maps bird's eye view. We haven't even touched on increased traffic congestion. Have you sat in traffic in the once rural hills above Irvine? I have. It's now bumper-to-bumper during rush hour and weekends as well. Even the toll roads are overly congested with stop-and-go commuters. Someone has to draw the line at some point, and that's why I'm perplexed on why no one can seemingly come up with a favorable, more rural master plan that could benefit everyone, including Chevron and the people of Fullerton. I have what I believe to be a viable option, should anyone at Chevron or City Council be willing to hear. One last thing, just wanted to thank you all and your consideration toward preserving all, if not the vast majority, of this incredible swath of the last remaining open hills that is so beloved by our community.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of the council. I'm Kate Dalton. I've lived in Fullerton for probably way too long, but, and I've certainly addressed this council many, many times on the, on the subject of Coyote Hills. I'm happy to be here tonight to say that perhaps we absolutely do finally have a path forward, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to take it. I think the, the last two years of the, in quotes, "path forward" phase of this development has been a productive one. I think the Friends have come together and raised money, looked for grants, and tried to buy some of the other neighborhoods from the project, and I think that's a good thing. I think if we can preserve more open space, that's, that's always a good thing. In a perfect world, I've said a million times before, different councils, that five hundred acres preserved would be wonderful. I mean, I don't think anybody here would, would argue with that, but dealing with the real world, that's, that's not a feasibility. I'm not going to belabor the points that have already been made about the fact that we've been working on this. Our, our group, Open Coyote Hills, has been actively working on this with Chevron for about twenty, twenty-some years now, and we've worked really hard to get what we've gotten from Chevron. I think a lot of people have looked at, at the DDA and the, and the development agreement and wondered how we got so much from a large corporation that is not readily giving things away. And it's because we worked closely with them, and we worked with their consultants, and we made points for, for saving more space and consolidating homes and developing the nature center. And we worked hard for the endowment that will allow this not only to be cleaned up, restored, and opened, but also to be able to be maintained in perpetuity. So I think that, you know, I could belabor it again, but a couple of you have heard me say this a million times, but I hope that this truly is a path forward to preserve as much as we've, you know, come up with the original part of the agreement and then any added land that can be added because of what the Friends have been able to do. But we absolutely need to move forward and open this tract of land. We have over three hundred acres, and I don't know anybody who would honestly say that an urban metropolis or megalopolis like Los Angeles, that that's not a huge piece of open space. And it is contiguous, it's been, it's been determined to be habitat, valuable habitat that absolutely will, will protect the nature there, or it wouldn't have been signed off on. So it's been litigated now for as long as I can remember. We're all exhausted, and I think we do need to come together and make sure that we actually open the amenities in the West Coyote Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else here for public comments? If no one else is here, we'll have, this be our last public comments of the evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Silva and council members. I'm Jane Reifer, and the Friends of Coyote Hills also has gratitude for Bob Ward and his relentless pursuit for open space and amenities. It's interesting because I feel that the Friends of Coyote Hills vision does not take away at all from the Open Coyote Hills vision. I think the Friends' vision just adds to it, it amplifies it, it expands it. We also look forward to the day we can open Coyote Hills. We know that having true open space, not the open space that also has development, put crowding in it, but true open space is going to come at a cost. We understand that. We feel that if we don't make an opportunity to raise the money at this point, that not only will we lose several hundred acres of valuable habitat, but we will also create an insoluble rift in our community. You can hear how passionately people feel about both sides, but if we are able to save all the land, we include the goals of the people with open, who are with the Open Coyote Hills vision. Saving a hundred percent of the land for open space is not an unheard-of idea. In the city resolution, there were three options of additional purchases. The city could purchase Neighborhood One, the city could purchase Neighborhoods One and Three, or they could purchase the entire property. Please help us find a way to work with Chevron so we can execute purchasing the entire property. Thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, we, we end public comments, but I know that some of the folks that came here from, regarding the Tommy de la Rosa, uh, street change, I, before I switch it over to the, the city manager, I would like to, to request that we bring a staff report to see if we can make that happen, and then if we could bring that staff report by the, the second meeting in April, if possible, but no later than the first in, in May. So I'd like to put that on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can make that happen, and I'll talk with our Public Works Director and our Chief of Police on that. I do believe that, yes, it is currently called Mid Block. There are no addresses that I know of and no properties that are addressed to it, so I think that's a relatively easy change. We'll look at our past history of making name changes, but we can bring that forward.
All right, thank you. And, and with that, Mr. Manager, if you can comment on a couple, any items that were brought up today?
Sure, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, real quick, just before I get on to some of the public comments, I do want to recognize that we've had two new hires in the last couple weeks. One is a police officer trainee, Brandon Pinder, and then a police records clerk, Anita Garcia. So I welcome both of them to the city of Fullerton and to the Fullerton Police Department. Couple items on the homelessness, we are still moving forward on that. I think some of the points that were brought up tonight by Mr. Lagenbacher and also by Samantha, I don't have her last name on my notes here, but kind of points to the need that whereas right now we're focused on the emergency shelters or navigation centers, whatever you want to call them, that there's still that need for getting people through that, because that's what those initial centers are. Their initial step to assess, identify, and then to move them on to affordable housing opportunities, permanent supportive housing, but into permanent housing. So as we work forward, both with the North Service Planning Area, the North Spa, which there are thirteen cities, on those emergency shelters, navigation centers, we also are focusing on that long-term aspect, which is increasing the supply, that next step, to get people in and out of those shelters as soon as possible. So we talked a little bit about the Mid Block, we will most certainly bring that back in April. And then on the protocol for flying flags, we do have a, staff's been working on a draft of that as requested, and we will look at that protocol. One of the things we found out is that we're currently in violation of where the POW MIA flag is flown, so we're going to change that. It should be right below the United States flag and above the state flag, which is according to the US flag etiquette. So we'll make that change, but we are learning about that, and we'll bring back a staff report on the larger issue. And everything else pretty much was about West Coyote Hills.
Can you just, I know a lot of you were here, spoke on it, and you were up to speed on the decision that was made by the Supreme Court, but for those people that weren't up to speed, can you just give a brief statement on that and what it entails and what happens now?
Uh, yes. So essentially, last Thursday on the twenty-seventh, the California Supreme Court denied the petition to review the appeal of the appellate court decision in this case, and so that effectively ends all of the litigation. So what does this mean? First, as some people alluded to, the city does not own this property. It is owned by Chevron, so they do have a fully entitled package for the development up to the seven hundred and sixty homes that were mentioned. That's about thirty-six percent of the overall acreage, so that leaves about sixty-four percent as open space. One of the things that we're doing is we are setting up a meeting with Chevron next week, talk about Neighborhoods One and Three. And as was mentioned, there is the ability for the city to purchase Neighborhoods One and Three. Funds have been secured for that, and we're going to go forward and bring that back. Per that original vested tentative tract map, there was a timeline in there of about two months, so it is a relatively short timeframe. We do believe that we will make it because most of the language is within the VTTTM, the vested tentative tract map. So we're just going to work with our lawyers, move that over to a purchase and sell agreement, and make sure that we can purchase Neighborhoods One and Three. The benefit of that is that in the vested tentative tract map, which came about three years after the development agreement and Measure W, the city at that time had already secured Neighborhood Two. So with One, Two, and Three, we basically have a contiguous open space that is everything in between Euclid and Gilbert Street, which is a great thing because it is a contiguous open space. We'll be bringing, we're beginning the process for what's called the initial trail development, so that is to get the public using the West Coyote Hills area as soon as possible. That is both, as we heard, some remediation on not only some of the, from the past oil issues, but mostly from the invasive species, getting the trails up to speed because they haven't been legally used and developed as trails. So working with that, on that, so getting that initial trail development so that it can be open, and then working on all the other public benefits that are listed. One of the things we're going to do is, we do have a website location on the city's site about West Coyote Hills. Given the Supreme Court decision, we do need to update that with next steps, some frequently asked questions, and kind of listing out what those public benefits are and what we're going to begin working on, so that the public does understand what they're going to be getting, what the definition of a park in this sense, it's a wilderness park, so, you know, soccer fields, no, but trails, vistas, the interpretive center, so people have an understanding of what is going to be there. And then we'll keep that up to date as we go forward and bring any type of update back to the city council as warranted, so.
All right, thank you. And just, I'm going to say a quick comment, and then I'll, we'll move forward, but. So I just mentioned that we are, we did call for a staff report to come back and, and see what we can do to change that name of the street, so, all right, thank you. And council member reports, Mr. Whitaker, would you like to report out anything?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your agendizing of possible name change for, for Mid Block Street was something that I had, and wanted to thank those who came tonight to talk about it. Mid Block Street is a name that only a bureaucrat could love, and I'm not even sure they could love it very much. And to, to honor former police officer Tommy de la Rosa, I think is, is a very good suggestion, so appreciate your agendizing that item for our consideration. I have an operational issue tonight to bring up a little bit, partly due to the fact that we are having so much rainfall, now the number is twenty point one five inches this season to date. And so after last year's around, for most local areas, four to maybe a little under six inches, that's, that's a big increase. But I wanted to talk tonight to Public Works a little bit about what's been happening in our neighborhood, now a part of southwest Fullerton, is, and I'm happy to see it, sidewalk grinding to reduce the hazards, trip hazards on sidewalks, and I, I think it's a good thing generally. There's been a large amount of it being done in southwest Fullerton recently. But I've been noticing that adjacent to and along with some of the grindings which, which have been done fairly well, are shattered sidewalks, almost as though something very heavy were dropped on those sidewalks. And I don't know whether we've had soil softening due to the rains that maybe is contributing to this, so I wasn't sure whether as our staff or whether we're contracting, they may be creating fairly costly damage in the process of, of solving that problem. And I'd be happy to get with someone and point out some specific areas. These sidewalks are still identified as having been originally installed in nineteen fifty-six, and most of them are still in very good condition. So if there's a way of reducing that, that type of damage, I'd be happy to, to help point those out. That's pretty much it for, for now anyway, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a few things about some of the activities that we've been doing. I was, one of the perks of this job is that you get to go to community events, and my favorite so far has been to reading to kids. It is Read Across America Week, and I got to go and visit Orange Thorpe Elementary and Commonwealth last night, and it was really a lot of fun and definitely a change of atmosphere from city council meetings. I also attended the Women's Club of Fullerton Health and National, Natural Health and Beauty Expo, and they hold this every year, and they fundraise, and the money that they raise goes back into the community. So I want to give a big shout-out to the Women's Club of Fullerton for that. I also attended the employee appreciation for our city, and truly, these are folks who work for us, for our city, upkeeping our city from tree trimming to pavement work and to everything from clerical, and there are some folks who've been around the city for at least a couple decades, if not more, I think thirty years, and, and really, it's, it's an honor to, to stand among them and appreciate them, and if, if you're out there, employees of City Fullerton, you are appreciated. Thank you. I also wanted to give a little update on my activity on the OCWD. I will be sworn in tomorrow, but I have been doing a lot of preliminary work from visiting different different sites and doing different tours and meeting different folks, including, meeting with a lot of the directors on the OCWD, including my friend, the president of the OCWD, Vincent Sarmiento, who I have a very good relationship with, and I'm really excited to start working for our community. I've also been in touch with our, in talks with our Metropolitan Water District Representative, Adan Ortega, and we are collaborating on coming up with a water policy for, platform for our city and improving also communication and reporting to our city council on all our regional board activities as well, so. And I'll be sharing this policy in the next council meeting or the following, based on how well we coordinate this. I'd like to, I don't know what the protocol is, but I'd like to ask our city council and city manager to start agenda, to start adding in our agendas actual, a time slot for reporting from our regional board representatives, so that we can have more transparency in the activities that are happening at these, at these boards. And I don't know if that requires a motion or not.
Well, it's impliedly included, but we can set it aside by resolution of the council if so desired, but I believe the city manager on his own could probably just highlight as part of the agenda.
Yeah, in the forthcoming decorum resolution back to the city council, which I believe we will have on the March 19th meeting, we want to expand on that, and so in that section we can have a good discussion and add what the council wants to that decorum and what type of reporting.
Appreciate that. So, thank you very much, that is all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Sure, thanks. I too appreciate everybody coming out for Tommy De La Rosa and the renaming of the Mid Block. Tommy was killed on duty horrifically while he was undercover, and, and it's just a tragedy, and it's, I think, a great tribute to him and to all of you, you know, who came to do that. So, I look forward to having that discussion. I also want to make sure everyone knows that this year's Love Fullerton Citywide Service Day is coming up on Saturday, May 4th, and that's a time where thousands of people come out to band together to do good works here in the city of Fullerton, everything from improving parks and cleaning schools to painting, spending time with senior citizens in assisted care facilities, running programs for children and women who are victims of domestic violence. There are many opportunities to serve on that day and all through the year, really. And so, I would just encourage you for service opportunities for yourselves and your families here in town, to go to lovefullerton.org and sign up to be part of this great movement of people pitching in to make their own community better. I also want to put on the city's radar screen a State Senate Bill 241. It's by State Senator John Morlock. It affects joint powers authorities and governance issues. Fullerton and Brea worked very hard to establish a joint powers authority among the two cities, and I, I think that we need to track that bill and other bills that affect JPA governance, and this one has to do with members ratifying contracts that are entered into by those JPAs. So, I want to put that on our radar screen. Someone made the comment as well that our armory, which operates as an emergency cold weather homeless shelter and has for the last 29 years, that it is worse than it's ever been before. And what I need to say about that is, that armory has been open during the cold weather season for, as I said, 29 years. We know that that is not a permanent solution, it's not a good solution. It doesn't get people permanently off the streets, which is why this city has been working so hard with all of its community members and nonprofits to find real solutions that give people a real second chance at life. And in this North Orange County Service Planning Area, which is what we call the North Orange County Cities, who are all working together to provide solutions to homelessness, what we are working on is regional, what we call navigation centers, that are emergency shelters that provide wraparound social services that lead to placement into transitional housing, into permanent supportive housing, that can really give people a second chance at life. And these, each location, each solution is extremely difficult to settle on and to move forward with, but we are all committed to helping the most vulnerable in our community and making sure that as we do that, the residents of our community feel good about that, feel protected about that, feel safe in the process. So, we're committed to doing that. And then, lastly, I just want to add to the, this discussion of the recent court decision with regards to West Coyote Hills. I think it's important to remember that the first time Chevron agreed to offer part of that property up for sale was in 2006, and it was at the request of the city, specifically Shawn Nelson, Sharon Cork Silva, Pam Keller, who really championed the beginning of the acquisition plan, that has now led to 64% of that property being set aside as open space. I want to, I mean, and even through the last 12 years, while we have tried to acquire property in West Coyote Hills, and I think we've raised, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, is it, are we at 29 million that is the total deal at this point?
That's the total deal, 29 million, 960 with the 15 million from Assemblywoman Sharon Cork Silva, the 4.8 from the park bond, the amount of money raised through grants, both private and public, and then about 3.75, that is in the grant stage process, but yes.
Thank you. So, even though the continual litigation by the Friends has made it difficult to raise money, the constant hard work of community members and the city and our state representatives have yielded that $29 million. And I also think that we need to say thank you to our current county supervisor, Doug Chafee, who, after the 2012 election, when our city council forced Chevron back to the table with the community to, for us to be able to acquire more land, he really took the leadership for the city council with our then-city manager, Joe Fels, to work with Chevron and the community to acquire as much land as possible in this area. And I look forward to the opening of the 10 Miles of Trails that Chris Huser talked about, the open space improvements, the nature center, everything that this community has been promised for so long, so that we are all able to enjoy West Coyote Hills together. And our agreement with Chevron requires them to begin the work on those trails within 60 days of the final court decision. That final court decision has come, so within 60 days, they'll be working on improving and rebuilding those trails. And all of those improvements have to be done within the first 14 months. In the words of one of our speakers, "We will finally, in our lifetimes, get to enjoy that open space and provide the balance that this community has asked for," and I'm really excited to be able to move forward.
Thank you. And I'll just piggyback on a couple of items that you touched upon, Mayor Protem. Yes, the homeless issue, we are making an effort, we're putting a lot of energy into it, it just doesn't move at the speed of light, so, but we are taking the hard steps and making, taking appropriate action. And on the West Coyote Hills, yes, the Friends of Coyote Hills, the litigation, good and bad, but on the good side, it also allowed us that time to raise, to get that 15 million from the state and the 4.8 from the bond fund. If not for the, that timeframe, we may only have 9 million here to purchase land, so we can see it either side, but I'd like to see it as they give us a little more time to generate a few more funds for that. And so, on another note, the census, as some of you know, the census is going to take place next year, and Orange County will have two offices. One of the offices will be here in Fullerton, and there's a lot of jobs available, 15, $20 an hour paying jobs. If you go to the city website, cityoffullerton.com/census2020, you can look at the flyers, at the information, to see what's out there, and for college kids or anyone, this may be something that you can have during the spring and summer of next year and make a little extra cash. So, again, that's cityoffullerton.com/census2020. And also, on some of the events around town, last week, I was, it was a pleasure to attend Pizza with the Cops at Peck Drive, and thank you for that community, and thank you for your officers, Chief Dunn, for being there and participating with the, with the kids and the parents of that community and really building that bond, so we, so everyone can see that the police officers are there to help, are there to assist us. And this coming Thursday, the Healthy Communities, Community Center there at Richmond will be having their annual event here at the Fullerton Community Center. So, if you're not doing anything between 6:30 and 8:30, please join, join them. You can go by the Richmond Community Center and get more information. All right, do we have that on the website? Mr. Manager? It may be too late to put it on, but if, if we can do that up. The Healthy Communities, Community Center, they're in essence, serving that community there at their cost. They're generating the grants, the funds, the city is helping out a bit, but they're doing a lot of the, the programs and, and training that I think should be more part of the city, but because of current situations, we're not able to do that. So, it's great to have Cal State Fullerton and Dr. Jesse Jones out here that are really taking charge and helping and creating that center. So, thank you, Dr. Jones. And with that, we'll proceed.
Mr. Mayor, we can make sure that's on our news release tomorrow on the website, so that blasts it out on our Facebook, because yes, they do a great service to the city, they are using the center, and they're wonderful partners, so in that partnership, we'll make sure to get that news out.
Perfect, and I think it's 5:30, right? It starts? 5:30, okay, thank you. All right, and with that, we'll begin our regular business. Item one. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, one more item. Tonight, we will close the meeting in honor of Ted Kim, who was an employer or helped with Grace Ministries. And I'm going to read the certificate, we have it for him here, and at the end of the meeting, we will take a moment of silence in his honor. So, this is to certify that Fullerton, the Fullerton City Council adjourned its Tuesday, March 5th meeting in memory of Ted Kim, who passed away March 1st, 2019. The council's action was taken in recognition of Ted Kim's love for his family and many friends. Being instrumental in joining Fullerton and Yong, Yong Ying as sister cities and his community service through Grace Ministries International, presented this date in remembrance of the life of faith spent in services to others. And on a personal note, I did know Mr. Kim, and he was a terrific human being, very kind and dedicated to his, his, his community, his church, and people in general. He, he never seemed to back away from a challenge or a service. So, it is with that that we will take a moment of silence at the end in his memory.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add?
Please.
Ted and I were friends, and he was the Senior Vice President for Business for Grace Ministries. He was, as the mayor said, a wonderful human being, and he loved Fullerton, he loved his community so much. He and his wife were ardent advocates for our city and for all the members of our community. And it's such a tragedy to lose him at, at, at such a young age, way before he should have, he should have passed away. And I will miss him greatly, and I really appreciate you keeping his wife and his family, all of his friends in your prayers.
Thank you, and thank you for reminding me. All right, and with that, we will proceed to our first regular business item, city council meeting, closed captioning and interpretation services. Is that staff?
I can do that one.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 15th, Councilmember Zara and Council, Mayor Protem Fitzgerald requested the city discuss closed captioning and interpreter services for city council meetings. As you probably know, closed captions are text transcription of the spoken component of a video presentation displayed on screen with the video. Depending on the service used, the captions are either embedded in the video in real time or in post-production. Some services offer a full text document of the proceedings in addition to the captions embedded in the video. Spectrum, our cable broadcast company, does not provide closed captioning services, so if we want to provide closed captioning over our Channel 3 broadcast, we would need to work with a private contractor and coordinate with Spectrum to broadcast the information on our, on our cable channel. There are several companies that will provide captioning services for online streaming video. Almost all of the options require additional equipment and will not caption within our existing live video streaming system. Granicus, who is the company that does our live video streaming, and does offer real-time closed captioning option with the existing video stream without any additional equipment, and they also provide a full text document of the closed captioning following the meeting that we can also attach to the video. Staff surveyed the cities of Anaheim, Buena Park, Brea, Yorba Linda, Placentia, and found none of these cities offer closed captioning at other city council meetings. We did find that Long Beach and San Jose provide closed captioning along with their video streams, so you can check their websites if you like. The city has no legal obligation currently to provide closed captioning services. The Federal Communications Commission doesn't mandate closed captioning for channels that generate revenues that fall under the $3 million revenue mark. Our 2017-18 PEG channels of revenues, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head what PEG stands, or Public Education and Government Channel, totaled just under $200,000, just well under that $3 million trigger. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires local government to provide effective communication for individuals with disabilities, but it does not specifically require that the city provide closed captioning services. However, if a person with a communication disability requests closed captioning, the city should consult with that person and determine what aid or service would work best to provide the most effective communication for them. The city could provide closed captioning unless it identifies an equally effective means of communication or determines that the use of the means chosen would result in a fundamental alteration or undue burden. Should city council wish to proceed with utilizing closed captioning services, staff requests direction whether to move forward with the real-time or post-production options, whether you want to pursue cable or the online video option, and any other input from council will be very helpful. Switching over to interpretation services, city council could provide interpreter services at city council meetings using a certified interpreter service or staff. Some interpreter services also offer the use of Whisper equipment, which allows the interpreter to whisper into a microphone device without disturbing the meeting and transmit the interpretation to headphones that the, those requesting interpretation would use. You may remember, we were going through the district elections process, we had the court-certified interpreters here using the Whisper equipment. It looked kind of like a UN meeting out in the audience, so. Your agenda report outlines considerations and costs for both the staff and contract interpreter options for your reference. We did survey Orange County cities regarding their interpreter services that they offer at city council meetings. I got responses from 10 of the Orange County cities. Four of them do not offer interpretation services, four offer interpretation on request, and two provide interpreters only for meetings with very special city projects on a case-by-case basis. Should city council wish to proceed with interpreter services, staff would like direction regarding whether to provide services at every meeting or on, only when requested in advance, whether to use a staff or contract service, whether you'd like to rent or, rent or purchase Whisper equipment. If you're Um, if you're going to use in-house interpreters, let, please direct staff to investigate personnel issues and overtime concerns. And if you're going to use contract interpreters, um, direct staff how you'd like us to locate that contractor. Uh, in addition, should city council wish to proceed with either the closed captioning or interpreter services, staff asks city council to provide direction regarding the items highlighted in the report and any other direction city council desires. Staff will then fully vet services based on that direction and present findings for city council consideration during the 2019-20 budget process.
Thank you. Um, any questions from council before we open it up?
Sure.
Questions?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, some of the questions I have here, um, when you mentioned the, the city of Anaheim, uh, they, they do not offer closed captioning, but I, I believe they offer some sort of, uh, Spanish language, uh, either translation, uh, live-
Anaheim did not respond to our request to the, our survey to the Orange County cities, so we can look into that further.
Okay. And then, uh, on the closed captioning, do any of these services provide, uh, language options like Spanish or Korean?
I don't believe so. I'm looking at Stephen Hale, who might have more information, however.
YouTube might.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, there, depending on which option that we go down the path of, if, if we were to proceed one of these, they all have different variations. For instance, you're correct, Mayor, YouTube does have variations of, uh, of languages. Those also go into additional rates that would be applicable because whenever you pay for a captioning service, most of my research was that you're paying for one closed captioning language at a time. So there's additional features as you would have to build a, a package for that. Um, but every one of them I typically have Spanish right off the bat.
Okay. And then, um, on the, um, the options for, for people with disabilities, what do we have currently?
Generally, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, we, you know, if we are contacted and informed beforehand, then we try to accommodate, uh, whatever that need is. And, um, Lucinda could probably answer that a little bit more specifically.
There's actually language on our cover sheet of our agenda. I believe it's 48 hours in advance to contact the clerk's office and we'll make accommodations on the request.
And that is only if someone requests to come to attend the meeting itself?
Right.
But not if they're watching, uh, their live stream?
No.
Right? So if someone with a hearing impairment, they wouldn't be able to understand what's going on if they're watching the live stream or even afterwards?
Right. Unless they have some sort of equipment on their end, we don't provide it on ours.
Um, and then final question here on the cost, um, on the Granicus closed captioning cost, is that $135 an hour, uh, an hour of, of streaming time or is it, uh, and is this li- this is live, correct? The real time, is it live?
Real time.
That's correct. That's, that's a real-time translation of what you're seeing. So we're paying by the hour as long as a meeting may or may not go. We're, we're paying in that time. And then there's the, uh, transcript that comes along with it.
Okay. And, and then it, does that get embedded into the feed, uh, so that when it's streamed afterwards, it's also in there?
That's correct. It's a, it's a real-time embed, so you would see it as it's actually being broadcast. And then you would also have it in the metadata of the video as well. And then you could also have a subsequent, uh, transcript.
And is this something where if, if we select a Spanish option, how is that also, um, shown on the screen? What, uh, do people have the option to select or is it, is this something that we're pre-selecting?
So my understanding on that is the Granicus feature is actually going to, um, without getting into the weeds of it, this is not being broadcast through the cable channel. It's being broadcast there. So it'd have to be a setting that we would have to be able to activate. Um, that might take a little bit more research on, on my end to dig and figure out if they can navigate between the two options. On your regular channel, you might be able to switch between which captions or subtitles you want. Um, so on the Granicus side of that being that it's, um, it's the receiver for that, I'm not entirely sure how to, how to, how to toggle between that, um, this time. It's, it's an option that we can explore and look into further.
Okay. And then, um, final question, uh, for the city of Long Beach and San Jose, do we know what exactly they provide as far as what option of these options?
As I understand it, both Long Beach and San Jose use the Granicus streaming. So it was ea- easy to get that reference out of our Granicus reps, so. But I'm not sure if they do, uh, foreign language also or if it's just the English captioning, but I can find out.
Okay.
I had a question. Uh, the, under the YouTube Live, uh, it talks about secondary video set with third-party software as additional equipment that's needed. Um, and so I wondered what the cost to that is. And then under cost, it says none. So, uh, if you could just explain that service a little bit more.
Sure. So the cost, uh, at the end where it says the cost is none, the YouTube Live service is a, is a free platform.
Right.
So there's no cost for us to actually do the live stream. To do the equipment, um, that goes with it, there may be, uh, depending on, you know, uh, what real-time platform we want to get into. So if there's any additional equipment that we want to integrate, for instance, you could take one of the caption maker or the, uh, Rev Close Caption, you can kind of integrate those, you can overlap those. If you were to do the, the YouTube Live feature, we don't currently broadcast our city council meetings on that, so there would be an additional setup that may go into, uh, we would essentially have two broadcast streams. We're broadcasting on our regular system that we're having now and then our YouTube. So we would need a different camera setup, equipment, just to actually get the secondary stream going, um, for that. That's, that's kind of where that additional cost comes in. But the actual cost itself to YouTube Live, there's no cost for that.
Okay. So that additional research, you're waiting for further direction from us-
That's correct.
-before you would do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Whitaker?
Just a quick question. Do we have any current metrics on viewership?
Uh, I, I don't know if you have anything for live stream. I, I don't have anything. We can't get a Nissan rating until we meet a certain threshold of, um, several million viewers at this time and we're, we're not close enough to get a-
Yeah, I would've seen that.
-true threshold on that.
So we've never really had a measure on that, that we could rely on.
We have, uh, reports in the Granicus system.
There might be some live stream viewership.
Right now, 10 people. Yesterday, we had 90 total page views. Um, yes, we do have ma- many reports in here and I can get you more data on that.
As we're looking at the cost effectiveness of this, it would just be good to have at least a ballpark. I, I wouldn't want to create a lot of effort to come up with that number though, but.
I've, the calls I've, I've put into our cable channel, um, has not been that we've met a threshold that warrants an accurate reading on that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, I think this has been enlightening for staff to research. Uh, clearly there's a lot of new technology out there, especially the after, um, the fact type where if we load it up and then with the Google translation and all that stuff. So we are happy to continue to do research and to bring some back. That's why some of the languages, you know, that will do it during, you know, uh, give us some direction as to where we go, direct us a little bit better, and then we'll bring it back during that budget, uh, process. But we do think it is a valuable and viable option. Um, it's just very new to us and we also are struggling with our current equipment, uh, given a lot of times the, the things we have and the non-high def cameras that we have going. So, uh, clearly we have a lot of, um, upgrading to do technology-wise, uh, for our broadcasting.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll send it out to public, uh, comments. If anyone would like to speak on the matter, please come up.
Hello, I'm Jesse Jones, uh, from Cal State Fullerton. Um, one of the reasons why I'd like to, uh, speak in favor of having the translation, especially in Spanish, uh, is, uh, one of the reasons is that St. Joseph, uh, Partners have put millions of dollars, well, not millions, let's say hundreds of thousands of dollars into the city of Fullerton to do what is called the Community Building Initiative. And that is working with the community to empower them to have a voice. And part of that is having them understand about their rights, uh, what goes on in city council. And, um, there's a large percentage of our community that speaks Spanish only. And, um, I have been working with them for the last three years and I know how passionate they are about improving the conditions of their neighborhoods. And so I would highly recommend that you do the, um, translation for Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, member of the council. My name is Eclat Nuncy and I'm one of my roles in the city is to, on the president of Dilac in the school district. In our district, we speak 45 languages. Okay? This is, this is our reality as a city. The two mayors that we offer translation during the meetings at the school district for Dilac is Spanish and Korean. Of course, we, we do it in English, the meeting, because those are, you see, that is our community and we have to respect backgrounds, ethnicity, and, and we have to encourage our community to come here and tell about the issues that happen in our city. If people don't feel comfortable to come here and you guys provide the translation sufficient that can express all the concerns, the needs, then we are creating more problem in our city. Because those citizens, they're going to keep quiet and the problems, they're going to keep growing. And that is a need, it's not going to cost too much money. We had the same situation when we have the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Hans Library. We have a lot of Latino community in that area going. And, and thank you, Mayor Silva, because you called somebody from the city to do the translation because we have a lot of Latino, you see, Spanish speaker only, community. And, but that is something that the city should provide for the, for our community, for the Korean community, for the Latino community, to encourage our community to come here and talk to you about the issues that we have in the different districts because we are one city and we have to have one voice and you have to hear every single person to come here to talk to you. Uh, we have now a situation to, you see, I'm taking the citizen academy at the police department and it's, we have 15 Spanish speaker only person. And, and the police department, they're going to get the equipment because it's not easy to translate to 15 people in a room because you disturb other people. But when you do it, you see in the back and you do the whispering, you use the whispering equipment, which I translate for the Latino community. We can, we can integrate people, we can inform people, people can report crime. People, when they come to the city, they're going to learn about the rules of our city, ordinance, so much to learn about our city. And for me, education is the way that you reach the barrier of crime, poverty, and that is that we have to encourage every single, oh, we serve our community in different levels in our city. Please, take the decision to buy is not that expensive and it will not serve our community. You can find a lot of volunteers if you need to come and translate for the, the different communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches de nuevo. Mi nombre es Veronica Moran.
Oh, my name is Veronica Moran.
Uh, por favor, si pudieran dar traducción ya que es muy importante para la comunidad. Uh, yo puedo hablar uno a uno, pero para mí es difícil estar en frente de ustedes por, para poder.
Um, if you could please provide a tran- a language translation, translation for the community, I can, uh, speak with, uh, folks one-on-one, but it's difficult to.
Cuando, uh, y si es para mí, yo que sé, puedo venir a hablar. Para la, para otras personas es más difícil por el idioma.
For me, I can come and speak and, uh, translate in English, but for others, it is very difficult as well.
Uh, por favor, tomen en cuenta esto. Gracias.
Uh, please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es, uh, buenas noches, mi nombre es Alma Chávez. Gracias, miembros del consilio.
Good evening, my name is Alma Chavez. Uh, thank you for your time.
Um, estamos aquí pidiendo, por favor, que nos pongan una persona que nos traduzca.
Uh, I am here to ask for you to please provide a translator.
Como ustedes ven, para nosotros a veces es un poquito difícil con el inglés, pero tratamos de hacerlo, pero hay muchas personas que, en nuestra comunidad, que no pueden hablar.
As you can see, it's difficult to, uh, translate here, but we also, uh, pro- try to provide translation to our community members as well.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, my name is Jose Trinidad Castañeda. I just wanted to point out that, uh, this is a very, uh, critical service that the city can provide for all residents, uh, whether they speak Spanish, Korean, or are, uh, deaf from the deaf community. Um, Bruce Whitaker, you talked a lot about the cost effectiveness of what option you may choose depending on the research that staff provides. And I think a one-time, uh, purchase option for new, uh, high-definition video equipment that can be, uh, easily integrated with, uh, evolving software technologies, whether it's YouTube Live or what have you. So that way you're not, uh, paying a recurring fee for, um, an additional consultancy or a private sector service. I think a, a one-time fee for new equipment that can work well with the new, um, platforms coming out, uh, that already provide closed captioning and translation is, is a better deal for the city of Fullerton. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, bring it back to council and, um, anyone, uh, Mr.? Oh, Mr. Whitaker?
Go ahead.
Oh, Zara?
Couple more questions. A couple more questions on, um, um, any, would there be any grant opportunities that we could seek for something like this?
We can definitely check the grant opportunities. The other thing is, um, as we talked about, the, the PEG funds, which are the 1% of the franchise fee from, uh, cable. And, uh, so we would look for the eligibility and I believe they are eligible to use on this type of services. Um, so, yeah, we'll look at everything that is non-general fund.
Can I, um, ask what we use those PEG funds for now?
A lot of broadcasting, um, other eligible expenses that go into it. I don't know, we've, uh, we'll look at that through the budget process. Um, yeah, any and all, presentation, website material. Generally, it's to provide public, um, access to city government issues. So, um, website updates, uh, in other cities, I've used, uh, part of the funds for, um, permit assistance because it allows, uh, people to come to the city and to get the information online and all that stuff. So they're very widespread. Um, so that's why I'm certain that this type of, uh, purchase would be eligible under those funds.
Um, so, so the, the, there are several things here, um, and I think each one has its own technology of some sort. Uh, so there's the, um, the live streaming, uh, closed captioning for the hearing impaired and that would be in English, plus the, uh, sub, the translation or the subtitles in, in either Spanish or Korean. Uh, the other is, is actually in the room itself here at the dais, uh, where we are providing some option for people who are, uh, either with, uh, hearing disabilities or with, uh, um, different language options. Uh, and what I, what I'd like to see is a little bit more, uh, narrowing down of some of these options, uh, and with more specific cost assessment and also more specific on the, on the technology. I'm, I'm leaning in favor of right now starting with something, uh, and then we can get the ball rolling. Technology's evolved, uh, but, um, uh, I, I like the, the Granicus option, uh, at this point, uh, but I'd like to learn more about what, uh, Long Beach does as far as cost and I'd like to learn more about what Anaheim does, uh, as far as, uh, Spanish. So maybe we can bug them a little bit to figure out what they do. Um, at this time, I'd, I'd like just maybe to ask council to make an effort to agree that this is the direction we are going. It's just a matter of, um, the specifics and narrowing, narrowing down the technology. Um, and so I don't know if there would be a, a motion to-
Either a motion or council consensus, either way, to give the manager direction.
Yeah. So a motion to say we, we will be adopting closed captioning, um, for the hearing impaired with language options, uh, pending further details, uh, on cost and technology assessment.
Uh, I would, uh, second that to put it, to put it on and, and see what we have once we narrow it down, right? Yes.
But just this is a, a decision of policy.
And this will be the first step.
Which, which would be fact-finding at this stage? That's what we're really talking about?
I would think so, fact-finding to try and narrow it down and see what, what's best for the city and the community. the city and the community. So...
Yeah, so it would be an intent, yes, a motion for our intention to move forward with this type of policy, providing that we get more information and narrow down cost and technologies.
That's just agendized, really.
Yeah. Mr. Whitaker?
One thing I wanted to mention is I have found sometimes live streaming options, which have added on the closed captioning. I don't know whether that's generally automated or some other mixed method, but I've found them to be notoriously inaccurate, almost comical sometimes. And so if the effort here is to increase transparency, I think the quality, the caliber of what we would go with has to be there. And it can be difficult a lot of times, because even, you know, in our council chambers here, when people aren't close to the microphone, or when people mumble responses and everything, the effort to get a clear accounting for the hearing impaired or whomever else, it needs to be, you know, good quality, whatever quality we're able to attain. Have you seen what I've talked about?
Yes, sir, I was actually gonna speak on that. YouTube, as Councilmember Fitzgerald was just mentioning, they do machine learning algorithms to implement their, basically what they're processing in real time, and that goes for their live broadcasts, and that would even go if we took our current council meeting and uploaded it to our YouTube channel. It would be there, and YouTube will give us an 85% accuracy rating on there. So there would be some cleanup that we'd have to go through and monitor on that, and that would go by each user and how they, you know, actually speak into a microphone or not.
Okay, well, like I said, I do like the idea of going forward. And so, real quick, I don't know who can answer. So on the Granicus side, just for clarification, they can do the closed caption, right? And they can also do, maybe you said one language? If we program it, do, let's say, Spanish?
So the closed captioning is actually what's coming across on air, whatever language that may be.
Right.
The subtitle is a secondary service, and that would be a translation into any additional, you know, as many languages we wanted to go proceed in. I believe Granicus offers both of those options, to my understanding, but they are two separate services.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And then YouTube, for that part, we can streamline, stream the meeting live, and then, they're not accurate, the user or us would be able to choose the language.
It would actually be the end user.
They can choose whatever language.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to worry about pushing out an English version or a French version. It would be the end user that could watch us.
And what you're saying right now, and I know they're not completely accurate, but somewhat, then...
I've seen some of their, somewhat accurate.
Yeah, okay.
What was the accuracy rate that they guaranteed?
I believe that their website says 85% accuracy.
Yeah, and there's...
And the transcript is a line-by-line transcript as well, and it's timestamped, but it's not, it can't be edited afterwards.
But the Granicus can be edited afterwards?
I believe so, because it's a raw data file that gets embedded into the actual video itself. It's like metadata.
Okay. All right, then, and then on the interpretation side, so on here, I like the idea of the whisper, and I don't know how often we would use it, but if it's, so it's rentals 85, and do we know what it costs to purchase one?
There was a company that was selling a use set recently for about $500. I don't know if it's still available, but we could look into that, but otherwise, I believe it's significantly more expensive than that.
Okay.
And it also depends on the number of units you would purchase.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the things I'd like to do that is, you know, we have other jurisdictions, so the Fullerton School District, the Fullerton Union High School District, reach out to them to see if there's something we can partner with.
Yes.
I don't believe they have, I don't know when their meetings are, but if we can share that with other, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so I would like to, you know, when we bring it back, I do want to see what the options are with the whisper, whether we can partner up with the district, or purchase our own, or rent it. And then I think on the video or cable, from what I hear, we want to look into a couple of options, and one of the options would definitely be Granicus. And I would even look to see into YouTube, just to see what's out there with that and what we would need. And I know it's 85% rental accuracy, and that's not good enough, but as we progress and evolve, technology evolves a lot quicker. Once they get to 90, 95, I think it might be useful or beneficial to use it, and with a disclaimer, it's 90% accurate or 95. So I definitely do want to see, get more information on those two, and then, and on the interpretation again, see what it would cost, and we can identify any staff member who is, other than Mr. Curio here, who can translate, right? We have maybe a pool or a couple of employees who would be willing to take that on. So then, so we had a...
We have, staff has received direction, this is a receivable file, so I would move acceptance of receivable file.
Okay. And to come back with some more information on those items. Are we good? All right, all right. Receivable file on the favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item two, Woodcrest Elementary School Crossing Guard. Let's make Meg McQuade welcome.
Thank you. Now, let me see if I can do this. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Meg McQuade, Public Works Director. Presented for your consideration this evening is the addition of a crossing guard at Woodcrest Elementary. It's on Baker Street, and it's at the crosswalk on the east side of the school. So, let me go to next. So when we're looking at this diagram, you can see the yellow highlighted crosswalk, this is where the engineering study was done. And so basically, we looked at what the state requires in terms of a warrant being met. We did an engineering study, and typically, the state says you need to have 40 pedestrians, school pedestrians crossing, and you need 350 cars in a two-hour period. It did well exceed, in the study, it well exceeded the number of pedestrians. Instead of 40, there were, I believe, 132. However, the traffic count was still under the warrants required. So instead of the 350 cars that are required, there were 244 cars required. Because of the number of school pedestrians, it was recommended by staff and taken to the Transportation and Circulation Commission to approve a crossing guard at this location. And so the Transportation and Circulation Commission approved a four-hour crossing guard, and that crossing guard is handled under the Police Department. It will cost approximately $14,000 in additional funding. Currently, we pay for the crossing guard program, there are 29 schools under it in one park. This will add a 30th school to the crossing guard program. It's approximately $363,000 a year, of which the school district pays $45,000. The city pays approximately $320,000. And we just recently learned of a major cost increase in the school crossing guard per-hour rate, so we may need to revisit that in light of the city's current general fund situation. The work that will also be done as part of this project is we will be adding some red curb closer to this crossing, or the crosswalk right here at 424 Baker. That's in order to increase visibility, and also we'll be reducing a little bit of red curb... Let me find my cursor. A little bit of red curb right in this location to increase parking availability for the parents. So it is recommended to move forward with this additional crossing guard, and I stand ready to answer questions.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes, it's always been disturbing to me at how large the city's share is for these crossing guards, and how small from the school side of budget, anyway. Do we have an idea of how typical is this? Is this a typical share amount that we have as opposed to other areas, other cities?
I believe it ranges by city, but maybe Mr. Domer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's one of the things we wanted to take a look at a little bit closer as we come back towards the budget, specifically in light of the increase in the per-hourly rate for the contract. And it does differ by city, especially if there is a, if it meets the merit, that's one thing. If it doesn't meet the warrants, but it's recommended to go forward, you know, that the city's picking up 100% is something that should also be looked at. So we will be bringing back to you those options and considerations, and also talking to the school districts.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Zara?
Yeah, so you mentioned that this would be the 30th school, so we are capped after this, we're no longer going to be able to get any other school crossing guards?
There is no cap to this program at this moment in time. The school district requests a review, engineering performs that review, and then based on the review, it goes in front of the Transportation and Circulation Commission.
So it's just that we are budgeted for 30, is that correct?
Currently budgeted, yes, sir.
Yeah. I think there are currently 20 schools in the district, and we have multiple crossing at multiple schools.
At multiple schools, you are correct.
All right, so we'll send it out for public comments. Any members of the audience wishing to speak on this matter, please come up?
I was just curious to find out, are these, is this crossing guard a contract employee, or are they with the city? I remember years ago, there was a crossing guard company coming in to some organization, I forget what it was, and giving out applications, and I wondered if the city ever accepted that company as a contract crossing guard company, or are the crossing guards paid for by the city? I mean, are they employees of the city, like they were many, many years ago? So can you tell me that? I'm just curious to find out if that crossing guard company ever, whatever happened to that.
Yeah, we'll answer that when we hear from everyone.
Okay.
Or can, or do we know that? Answer.
They are all contract employees.
They are all contract employees? So you do use that crossing guard company that came in years ago?
Probably, yes. Yeah, all American.
All city.
All city.
Buenas noches, yo sí voy a necesitar que me traduzcan, si por favor alguien puede venir a traducirme?
No, Mr....
Thank you. Gracias. Mi nombre es Ilse Miranda, y yo tengo, viviendo en la ciudad de Fullerton. Bueno, buenas noches a todos, al concejal, todos los que están aquí presentes. Mi nombre es Ilse Miranda, y yo tengo 26, 27 años viviendo en la ciudad de Fullerton. Y yo hoy estoy aquí para hablar sobre la necesidad que tenemos en la escuela Woodcrest, en la Baker, especialmente, yo vivo en la Baker. Y necesitamos urgentemente alguien que se dedique a pasar a los estudiantes, por la necesidad, que hay muchos accidentes.
Yeah, let me... Sí.
Essentially, she's here today to advocate on the need to have services to cross children, specifically their Baker in the vicinity of Woodcrest Elementary School.
Han pasado muchos accidentes. Si ustedes pueden ver o agarrar los records de la ciudad de la policía, pueden ver que hay muchos, muchos carros que no se miran cuando pasan y cruzan los jóvenes, niños, padres, especialmente, ¿verdad? No se mira. Hay muchos carros en los apartamentos que hace una visibilidad casi imposible.
That, there's many vehicles coming in and out of that area, specifically in the apartments, where there's a lot of blind spots that perhaps you may not be able to see those cars coming.
Y, me permiten, los accidentes son de carro, carro, o de carro...
En general, estamos hablando atropellos a las personas, a los niños, a los perros, a todo, en general.
And so the mayor wanted to clarify if these incidents were vehicle versus vehicle, or pedestrians, et cetera. And the speaker is saying that, in general, it's a little bit of everything, cars, person, pedestrians, and also animals, dogs, et cetera.
Yo sí estoy a favor de que pongan. Hace muchos años lo pedimos, hace como más de cinco años, que estaba en el PTA, lo pedimos, y nadie ha hecho nada, y hoy estoy aquí para pedirles que, por favor, aprueben ese cross guard. Y muchísimas gracias.
Several years ago, that she was part of the PTA that had made this request, and that that request has not been acknowledged, so she is here today to renew that request.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Mayor Silva, members of the council. Look, I'm gonna speak in the name of everybody here present, because we have a very hard rain, we have a storm, and we wanna go home too. We come here as a member, you know, our beloved city, because we noticed in the Woodcrest Elementary, even when we go to meetings to the school, that crossing is very dangerous for anybody that go to visit that school. This is an ongoing request that we have years doing to the city for a crossing guard. We know the situation in our city, but how much is worth the life of our children and the safety of our children? I think this is something that it can be done, this is very needed in this part of our city. The Baker Street, you know, and that's different situations coming on that. They even, I've been called, because, you know, the sewer system is not working very well when it's raining, it's like a big lagoon. And kids are going to school and stay in school with wet shoes and clothing. And you know that this rainy season's been very hard, and kids are getting sick. This is something that the city had to, you see, public works, it should be in that area too. And the crossing guard is something that we need, and it's something that, please, we request all the residents of this area, and all neighbors united to come to you as our representative, to help us to make this happen. And we appreciate your effort, because I know how much each of you love our children, our community, and community we make all of us together. And that is what it makes Fullerton, Fullerton, because we are a big family, and we have to take care one to another. Okay? And thank you so much, and be safe when you drive with this storm. But we are here for our school, and we thank you for everything you're gonna do for our city. Thank you. Applause. And you see that we need translation?
All right. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you to all of you. Have a wonderful evening.
You are a force to be reckoned with, to be sure. Fantastic.
Thank you so much. I don't speak well, but I understand most of it, yeah.
Any other public comments? Passa, pero.
Buenas noches otra vez.
Good evening again.
Por favor, esta área necesita mucho, porque el problema es que los carros también corren a mucha velocidad.
If you please, this area needs a lot of attention, the cars drive at a great speed as well.
Y yo conozco esta área porque voy a recoger a Alma. Entonces, es bien, bien difícil cuando llueve también, porque no hay suficiente lugar para que se vaya el agua, las personas se tienen que meter, a veces los carros, tenemos que ir con más cuidado, los que tenemos consideración.
I know this area very well, because I pick up my friend Alma. When it rains, it floods very easily, and all the cars have to be careful when they drive through the dips.
Yo sé que tenemos muchos problemas en la ciudad, pero esta vez venimos por esta área. Gracias.
I know we have a lot of problems throughout the city, but we also need attention in this area too. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Martha Olivera. Like, you know, they've been...
And like, you know, they've been saying, and I, I've lived in the city of Fullerton for more than 30 years. Like, they mentioned, you know, I also work at the school, and like, a couple of times, I've been close, they've been close to run me over. I pick up my nephews and nieces from school, and as I'm walking, I make sure that, you know, they're looking at me, they're...
Can you get closer to the mic?
Unfortunately, they're always in a rush, and it makes me really frustrated that, you know, that hopefully, you know, you guys take the time to listen to everybody, everybody that is here, you know? Please, let's, you know, together, we love Fullerton, we love our city, and I know anything could be possible with your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alma Chavez. Now you come in with this petition, the crossing guy for Woodcrest and for Baker School, for Baker Street. This is so bad, because sometimes the kids walking by yourself, with the parents working, and all have some parents to take care of, and the cars driving like a freeway, and that's too hard for the kids to cross in the, the street. And thank you so much for support this petition, and I have another petition. The water is so bad. The water, when there's raining, they're coming to the, flooding the sidewalk. And sometimes they're walking to Richmond, depends when they're walking with the kids, walking to, into Richmond, and that's the same. You go to the Highland, it's the same. If you go to the other side of the 400 West Orangeville, it's the same, the water is the side to side, and there's no walking for the kids. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring you back.
We're in, we're in. I make a motion.
I second. I'll second, I'll second that to, to adopt. Just one quick comment, Ms. McWade, when we did that study, did we, can we use that data to see if that street warrants some sort of speed bump or hump or something? Can we use that if there's a concern about speeding there? Or do we need to go back and do another study?
I will double-check, I'm not certain of our policy on speed humps.
Yeah, I know.
Unity's been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah, because it's there and it up at the Garnett Gem District area, there was also a request. But yeah, but if we can use that data to see if what it warrants, and I know our public safety, it's not, you know, they don't like, they may not like it, but who knows? Maybe we have, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but let's look at that. All right, any other?
One small correction, we refer to it as Baker Street quite often, but it's not Caye Baker, it's Avonita Baker.
Oh, okay. Avon, all right, thank you, Avonita, there you go. All right, any, from council, we have a motion and a second, any other comments?
No, I think this is a long time coming, so can't wait to say aye.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. All right, consent calendar, do, do any council members wish to pull any items?
I'd move the consent calendar.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. And lastly, before we adjourn, I would like again to take a moment of silence for Mr. Ted Kim and all the work, and, and have our prayers go out to his family, so we would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and the meeting is adjourned, and I'll...